We'll call to order this meeting of the design review board for the city of Mitchell Park. Whoever, please rise and join me in the pleasure. Before we start the items on the agenda, there's always a call to the community for anyone who wishes to address the board on anything that's not on our agenda tonight. Is there any requests to speak?
Yes, Chair, you have two requests to speak in front of you. The first of which is a call to the community request. The second of which is for one of our agenda items. They just fill out the form.
So the Neil was not on the agenda. Okay. So Susan, please. Okay. If you want to come and give your address and state, no, we can't. Yes, we can't really respond with anything.
So Chair, item four of our agenda is a response to the call to the community. So
Oh, okay.
This actually, as ironic as that sounds, this is an opportunity for any non-agenda items to be presented, and it does afford this board to respond to that.
Okay, whether it's just referred to staff or whatever.
Any of the above.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Go ahead.
Okay. Hi, I actually wrote an email, so I'm just gonna read that. So we are here to express our concern regarding the proposal of our neighbors 207 North Yon Ave. Front yard plans for the ficus trees and parking pad that if they have already installed and have been told by the city they need to bring to the review board for approval. We'd like to bring attention a few important points. The ficus trees, which extend all the way to the road, will create significant visibility obstruction when we leave our driveway in the next six to 12 months as these trees grow quickly and the way they are planted, they will make a thick hedge. This is not only inconvenient, but also a potential safety hazard as it will limit our ability to see oncoming traffic when entering or exiting our property. It will also limit drivers' visibility of not only our cars, but also our children leaving the driveway on bikes or rollerblades until they are already nearly in or in the road. Additionally, the parking pad that has been installed is causing confusion among residents and visitors in the neighborhood. This has led to several instances where our guests have tried to park in the pad because they mistakenly believe the parking pad is part of our driveway due to its positioning and close proximity to our property lines. We have also heard from multiple other neighborhood residents that they are unhappy with the look of both the pad and the ficus trees as the trees go through the city's right-of-way, all the way to the road, and the pad is floating all by itself when the rest of the driveway is located on the other side of their home. Also, the neighbors' cars that park on this pad often use our driveway to access it, which is our private property. For these reasons, we kindly request that the city design review board consider not approving the trees to the road or the parking pad as it is. We believe these issues could be addressed with proper adjustments to the trees and the parking pad's placement to avoid further confusion and potential safety concerns. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Did you get your address? You've got that.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Which, which property is this that we're looking at tonight?
It's not on.
Okay. That's why.
Okay, I don't think they brought it to the city yet.
Okay.
Correct. So Chair, Board Member Derry, item three, the call to communities for any non-agenda items. So we do anticipate this item to come to you at a future date. At this time, it has not. Our, the neighbor here would like to address this board ahead of time. And certainly, per email, I have copies for everyone. I'll share with you during item six, the staff report on current events. And when this item does become before the board, certainly, the point in my presentation, I always say, any public comment received, yes.
Okay. Thank you so much. Okay. Anybody else wishes to speak on any non-agenda item? Okay, then we'll go ahead and move forward. The approval of minutes? The motion to approve the minutes.
I thought maybe you were gonna speak. If you're not, I moved the way you approve the minutes as published for the March 6th meeting.
I have a, a motion to approve the minutes. I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Maybe Rachel, voting by absentee. In abstention, right?
Okay. Uh, next. Approval of a new addition, discussion of possible action to approve a proposed addition located at 407 East Fairway Drive. Is the applicant present?
Chair, our applicant for this item and the next item was unable to attend in person. Her name is Kami. Kami is available on Zoom, and when we come to that point in the presentation, she'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, okay. So Randy, you'll give the staff presentation.
Yes, thank you. So Chair, members of the board, good evening. There are six items before you tonight. We're very excited that we continue to have such interest from our residents to improve their properties, and we're happy to come before you tonight with plenty of exciting stuff. So item 5B is a request for a new addition. The applicant, as mentioned, is Kami Schaffner. She is available via Zoom on behalf of Cara Campbell, the applicant. Address is 407 East Fairway Drive, and this is to add to the home as well as enclose a patio. The zoning for this property is R115. This request is to add 520 square feet onto the existing home in the rear and remodel an additional 834 suite, 834 square feet within the home. And this includes converting an existing rear patio into livable space as part of that endeavor. Now, this existing house is a slump block home, and the proposed addition is in a sand stucco finish and matching colors with the home. To the left of the screen, or skewed, as it were, is to the north, Fairway. This home is on the south side of Fairway Drive. What is highlighted in red, and I will highlight further right here for you, is the scope of the addition. The patio is this northern half, let's call it, and the new construction is the southern half. This site is also providing onsite retention to correspond with the existing, or I'm sorry, with the proposed addition to offset any flows. This is the house as it sits today. Again, this addition is fully in the rear of the home, so you'd have to drive past the house and look backwards to essentially get a sense of where this is located. This is a look as if you were in the neighbor's yard, looking west to the neighbor. The proposed addition is being done in a parapet roof with the downsides, you know, scuppers, excuse me, to handle the four days of rain, I think, are left of the year. As far as staff's analysis, this proposal meets all the required setbacks and lot coverage, the development standards in which they're zoned for. It does meet all the intents of Section 39, which is our design review code and within the zoning code, and we have not received any public comments on this proposal. So our recommendation is to approve the proposed addition. It's case PZ 2515, located at 407 East Fairway Drive, and is subject to the exhibits provided by the applicant within your pack up this evening, and one stipulation, and which states a building permit is issued, a building permit issued by the city will be required before any construction is to occur. I'm available for any questions, as well as Kami is unmuted and willing to answer any questions as well.
Any questions? I, I, I just want, it's like a completely stylistic change to put a parapitted addition on this kind of ranch-style pitch roof house, and there's no other similar element on the, on the front of the house. I'm not sure. I know it won't be seen, but architecturally, it wouldn't be out of place, I think, but.
I, oh, sorry. So I completely understand what you're saying, and if we had the option to do any other roof line, we would. However, the two roof lines, how they meet at the back of the house, actually, I guess, like, you know, we have the, uh, the valley that meets on, from the patio side or from the main, I guess, house side, and then from the garage side. And so to redo the roof line there would mean to actually, like, tear off all of the existing trusses that are over the garage and completely reconstruct that entire roof. So this was honestly the most cost-effective way to do it. Originally, the client was wanting to build out on the front of the house, and I talked them into building out at the back so that they wouldn't have to, I guess, tear off as much of the house, the roof of the house, in order to make it look like it's congruent with the style. I did talk to them about doing some type of a, lattice is a bad word, but almost like a railing at the top to kind of make it look more like ranch-style historic. And so we had kind of discussed that option as maybe a possibility.
It just adds maintenance issues. Does anybody else have any questions or concerns about that? The only place that will kind of show would be like, as you're looking at the garage side, you can kind of see that it'll be a little box attached on the back side. And there is no comments from any neighbors or anybody?
Sure, no, we have not received any.
I'll, I'll make a comment.
Okay.
Since I'm a neighbor.
Okay.
Uh, and with what Tara is planning on doing, and I agree with what her architect or designer goes with, because that garage was an add-on, and so structurally, it would be a large mess. And I, I agree with the fact that the, making it a, just a flat roof. And on the back of my house, because I'm at 402, I have the same thing that I did.
A flat roof attached.
Yeah, when you, when you go down the side, you'll see my roof slopes towards the Wigwam House, and then you see a little bit of a parapet wall, and it's back there.
Okay.
And when I, when I did my remodel, also part of it was because I put solar on, and that was before we were allowed to put solar anywhere.
Yeah. Okay. There's no other, any other comments, questions? Someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a, I'll make a motion that we approve the application on 407 East Fairway Drive.
I'll second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? And all in favor?
No, no.
All in favor, say aye. Three are in favor. I will be opposed just for stylistic reasons. Okay, so it passes. The next one is item C, approval of new patio covers, discussion of possible action to approve new patio covers located at 609 North Old Litchfield Road. Okay. And it is, can we also?
Yes, Chair, thank you. Same applicant for you this evening. This is a different address, however. This is 609 Old Litchfield Road. This is item 5C for some new patio covers. This property is also zoned R115. It's located along Old Litchfield Road, and this would add on to the existing structures already in place and previously approved by the design review board a long time ago, actually. This is the house as it is today. Unfortunately, there's just too many trees along Old Litchfield Road to get a good shot of the front of the home as it sits today. If you've driven on Old Litchfield Road, this is on the east side. It backs up to the course and pretty notable as far as its architecture or style. Here's it is in a 3D rendering. What it is, is essentially it's adding, and Kami will use better words than I do to describe it, the cladding as far as some of the trialous features, those outdoor features, as well as enclosing a currently lattice-style, I guess I would say, opening at the front door to be a fully solid roof on the front side. There are additional changes in cladding as far as onto the existing structure with, and again, Kami can say these better than I can, with the veneer, I'll call it, and just the, the upgrades, I'd say, to the structures that surround the property and the main house. That's better described here with that 14-wood, the planks, as far as that feature being added, and then the fascia being wrapped as well with the metal. So as far as, again, the analysis goes, these sorts of improvements are consistent with how it is today. We don't feel that this is a departure, by any means, from what is currently there. It meets our intents of Section 39, design review section, and we have not received any public comment on this proposal as well. So our request or recommendation is to approve the patio covers. It's PZ 2516. It's located at 609 North Old Litchfield Road, subjects to the exhibits provided by the applicant, and the same first stipulation, building permit issued by the city will be required before any construction is to occur. And I'd be happy to answer any questions, and Kami can probably describe it better than I can as well.
Thank you. Any questions for staff or applicant? Okay.
I'll, I'll make the motion as presented.
Okay. You have a motion to approve as presented?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that's a support.
Kami, feel free to drop off.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next step is discussion possible action to approve, to approve the new front yard fence located at 310 West Yano Drive, I guess how you say that.
Yes, thank you, Chair, and Yano means like a field, grass field, essentially. And then it backs up to Scout Park. It works out great. So our applicant and owner are the same, Mr. and Mrs. Wolf, who live at the house. This is at 310 West Yano Drive. It's a request to build a front yard fence on both sides of the house. The zoning here as well is R115, and this would add fencing onto the existing walls to enlarge the side yards on both sides of the home. This one's a bit unique, as I just want to make sure it's clarified in this conversation that the existing house, you can see, is a slump block house. The wall is, you know, your standard eight-by-eight-by-sixteens. However, the request for you this evening is actually to add fencing, not wall, fencing a, along where you see this Nissan Murano Pathfinder, I'm not sure, along up to about the basketball hoop, and then straight across that extended driveway where the trashcans are on this side, and a similar sort of situation where you see the air conditioner to bring that fence across that backside of the grass and then return to the shared wall between the neighbors here. Here it is in plan form as far as what is currently existing in the, it's called the green, and what is being proposed in the red as far as extensions, expansions of those side yards, essentially. The proposal would be in this black pick-up style fence with slats in the, I believe it's composite wood. They're shown right. Now, it's curious, and the applicant and I had a chance to talk about this today. 3002 B1 of the zoning code, which is within walls, fences, landscaping, does permit, and this isn't something that's going against code by any means. So you can, as well as or fences, that can be added onto your home. So that's not a, this isn't a variance by any means. This is something that's certainly within the applicant's ability. Now, again, as far as what we typically see, minimum standard for the exterior side of the fence, the masonry wall, is stucco and paint. Now, the wording is a bit silly in the sense that, well, it's the exterior side of the fence. You don't put stucco on the exterior side of a fence. So I would advise that we, you know, don't expect a fence to be stuccoed. And then you do, of course, have, in your allowances, except the design review board may vary this requirement to provide the design compatibility with nearby architectural elements. Now, as far as any public comments, we have not heard anything from the public. However, you'll see in the stipulations, conversations with the owners on both sides have been ongoing and have been supported by both neighbors to construct this new addition along the shared property lines. So it is our request for you to approve the proposed patio, excuse me, I should not say proposed patio covers. The case number is right, but patio covers is an error. It's PZ 2518 located at 310 West Yano, subject to exhibits provided by the applicant, and three stipulations. One, of course, building permit issued by the city. Two, an agreement with the adjacent property owner will be required. And three, there is an underground utility easement in this area. So we do want to make sure that the applicant is aware that there may be something located underneath, and that will want to make sure that there is coordination, just to make sure that nothing is hit for any sort of anchoring of that fence into the sidewalk or into the driveway as well. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
A couple. Is it possible for you to bring up like a, an aerial view of the property?
Chair from above? Yes, I can. I'll, I'll just refresh for the, anyone else, the street view here's on the east side. Here's the west side, but if you give a moment, I'd be happy to do that as well.
I just want to kind of clarify exactly where you're planning to put that, because there's no, the, the plan was not really a site plan per se, but. And then the, I guess the applicant asked, the fence, how, like, how, what is the spacing between support posts? Is anyone, is anyone here who could answer? If you want to come through. Just have your name and your address.
I'm Ed Wolf.
Okay. The property owner?
Yes.
And so the fencing you're proposing, how, what is like this, but you'll have posts and then the fencing panels in between?
Yes. The reason we want to do this, as you can see, we have a huge driveway, and we don't use it. Very seldom do we use it, and we feel like it's wasted space. And we don't have side yards on either side, so we want to, that wall that's back there is probably 50 years old, and it's ready to fall down anyway. So we want to expand that up and make our backyard a little bit bigger on each side.
So the fencing would be like?
It'll come down. That's our neighbor. The, the two cars on, on my left here, those are my neighbors. That's my neighbor's driveway. Where the basketball hoop is, that, that divides us.
So the, the fencing is going to be, obviously, we have to still be able to drive into your garage without, so the fencing would be like along here?
Yes.
And then back to the, this wall's coming out?
Well, there won't be any fencing back there, just.
But this wall is coming out.
That wall's coming out, correct.
And so your, the fence you're proposing will go like this, and then touch to wherever that exists.
And it, and it gives us plenty of room to get in the garage, and we've already measured all that off. And then basically the same thing.
Right here?
Correct.
So it's not coming close to the front at all?
No, no, it's coming right, right in front of the air conditioning unit.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
In front of the street sign. Correct.
Yeah. So the fence will screen the air conditioning unit, too?
Yes. Randy, can we go back to the picture that shows that metal, metal wood?
Yes.
And it's, it's metal?
It's metal, and then the strips in the middle are that, like, the luma wood stuff. I'm not sure exactly what it's called, but it doesn't fade or whatever. It's not, it's not solid wood.
So it's not like a wrought iron fence? It's pretty solid.
Yeah, it's, yes, it's the, the metal fencing, but then there's slats that'll go across.
So is that a field-built fence or it comes reassembled?
No, we'll have to put it together.
Okay. And the color you selected was black?
Slats are, the slats are kind of brownish, though. The slats are right there.
Yeah.
So, so they look like they're what, about a?
Oh, it's the lighter color.
Four inch by, two inch by two inch?
Uh, I think they're a little bit wider than that.
Okay. And height, five feet, six feet?
Five.
So the main color will be that wood color?
Yes.
That you'll see, and then this, the dark is just the support post? Okay. Any other questions?
Are we to make the motion?
Questions, concerns?
No, I have no questions.
Okay.
I'll make, I'll make the motion to, as presented. Because he likes to read it.
But in our zoning, we don't allow typically like the old-style wood fencing. I mean, there's probably some still existing around, but.
Yeah, so Chair, it is, it is curious, because metal fencing is on the books today in the code that is an option, as Mr. Wolf is proposing.
Yeah.
The standard Tom Sawyer-style no is no longer an option.
Okay, okay. All right. Is that, like, aesthetically, that's kind of going to give the same views, and that it's structurally, it's, it's a better product. As my concern is that this is give someone else, like, oh, good, we can do wood fencing again. Okay, that was, that's the only thing that I was thinking about.
So do I need to amend it, or? Do I need to amend my, my motion or not?
No, it's your decision to make a motion. Go ahead. Your motion was.
The motion already.
Okay. You seconded it. Okay, so that was just further discussion. Any further discussion after that? No? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'm, I'm going to just hold off, abstain from that one, because I'm not really sure that I like it, but.
Sure, give me one second. I'll look over at our deputy clerk to see if abstain vote is permissible.
Is it permissible? It used to be.
Correct.
Okay, I'll just say no then.
Thank you.
So it still passes, but it's easier for bookkeeping.
It makes our meetings look like we're doing something. Where we have balance. There's a lot of, everybody agrees because they do a good job.
Next. Decision and possible action to approve a new, to approve new carport walls located at 154 Bahia Lane West.
Make sure this is item 5E, as stated, this new carport walls, the applicant this evening is a man star. The owner is very good. It's at 154 Bahia Lane West, and I'll explain this more detail in the upcoming slides. The zoning is RCEPD, residential cluster and planned development. I'd just like to make sure it's noted every now and then, so we expand those acronyms. There is a request would add a block wall between the existing carport columns and replace the existing canvas material. Here is a shot of the existing canvas material. You can see over time, these houses that are between City Hall and Tierra Verde Lake are a bit evolving, I'd say, and making improvements over the, you know, number of decades, quite frankly. So this would replace that existing canvas material. Here's another shot of it from the other side with a solid wall. The applicant has been in conversations with a contractor in order to do so. She's provided this illustrative, just to show it, not to scale, but that's okay. We certainly appreciate any information we can present to you, just make this more straightforward for you.
You go back to the elevation picture?
Yes, I may. As far as.
Or the front elevation? So the sidewalk on the other side of that canvas belongs to both?
It's shared.
Yes.
It's shared, okay.
And so this is not encroaching any further into the front yard. This is simply spanning the gap as well as the entry feature as well.
The entry would open, with the picture of having a gate right there.
Thank you, I'm sorry. Yes. That's why we ask these applicants to come, because sometimes I forget some of this information. Moving forward, the proposed improvements are consistent with the existing architecture. It will be in block with stucco and painted to match the existing house. It does meet our intents within Section 39, and we have not received any public comments on this proposal. So again, I apologize for this typo. It reoccurred a few times. The case number is correct, PZ 2519. The location is at 154 Bahia Lane West, and it's subject to the exhibits provided by the applicant, Amanda. And stipulation one, the building permit is required by the city before any construction is to occur. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, and the applicant is here as well.
I had one question and suggest, question suggestion. When you build the solid wall between the pillars, that I would offset the wall from the face of the pillar, you know, a good four inches or so, so that the pillar still stands out as an architectural feature, and not like try to make it flush, so, because that will never look right. You'll always be able to see it, but it won't look right, so.
So it has to come, come out a little bit, so it might work.
Take a side, like, like if the, in between, drop that, so there's this pillar, pillar, it would come like inside, so it's just not like flush, so it's not flush to the front of the columns, but. Flush, so it's not flush to the front of the columns, but fits in between them with a little um. So it's like, push that a little bit, recessed, I guess.
Is because. When I open my car door against that, it kinda goes in, and so I was trying to avoid my door hitting.
Yeah, it was just a little bit, even a couple inches. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, just so you can see the columns still, so they still exist as a separate kind of feature, it's not just a wall. You understand?
Yeah, definitely.
Okay.
I'll comment on it, since it's non-structural, what you're putting in, then you can use a thin fence bar.
You can use it, yeah.
In two inches instead of going eight inches. That gives you, you know, six and.
Another few inches.
Six inches more for the swing.
Okay, cuz I know that they're gonna do like brick and then they're gonna stuck it, so it'll match the exterior of the home and the paint.
So like just like a four-inch brick, yeah, that would look too, cuz that makes it, cuz a a block wall is gonna be eight inches if you use a thinner one. Then you can set it back and still not get into your.
Okay.
It'll still get your, give you room on the other side.
I can definitely explain that to him, cuz we haven't purchased anything yet, I need this wall up.
And and I would say, I guess, that if they're just telling you they're gonna build a brick wall. They're gonna use cement block.
Yeah.
Yeah, and and so it'll be a little suitcase block, which is still eight inches tall, it's only two inches wide. So that way you would have room and it can offset inward as we're looking at it. Two inches, put that two-inch block and now you've only used up four inches instead of eight or ten or twelve.
Okay.
And then you can line the inside with foam, so when you open, your kid's open.
That's the biggest thing, she's gonna just swing it open, okay, yeah, that works, you can do that.
Well, I'm added, are you, is the intent uh at all to put in an overhead door?
Like the, on the sidewalk?
On the front, no, on the front of the house.
No.
And the other neighbor it has.
I would like that, but I don't want the responsibility and maintenance of a garage right now, cuz. I don't know how long I'll really be there and between the owner and I, it just wasn't a topic, it was more so to put the block wall up due to. Conflict with the neighbor, um, so, and to make it more appealing and not really ugly.
I understand that, that that canvas is not a good look.
But we've needed it.
Yeah. Okay, I appreciate it, thank you.
I thought we were a friendly community.
Yeah. Any further questions for the applicant or staff? I'm gonna take a stab at the motion.
Sure. I move we approve this application. One fifty-four Bahia Lane West with the stipulations, recommendations of the. Board and staff.
I'll second that, okay, and we'll have the staff put the stipulations in. In writing for approval?
Yes, as uh stated, I will require undulation to create shadow lines on the front facade of the home.
I guess it's more just to keep the pillars as designed.
Chair, yes, we certainly appreciate that sort of feedback because that just makes uh the next application that much easier to pull for. It'll be tomorrow morning at eight o'clock.
Yeah. Okay, so we have the motion and a second. Who seconded, you?
I did.
Okay, uh any further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, you opposed? I'm glad we we approved it. Okay, next up. A discussion possible action to approve a new front yard pergola located at eleven fifty-eight East Acacia Circle. It's the applicant here.
Thank you, our owner applicant is the same for you this evening, Steph Muster, uh he has been before you've. Been before you before, excuse my alliteration and repeated word in my sentence, please don't document. Uh his request to build a new freestanding uh pergola in the front yard. The zoning is R one, this is right off of Vianueva on one of the. Uh peninsulas, uh next to the peninsula community in fact. And this is a freestanding uh pergola within the uh front entry to the home. Uh, the truck is blocking the view, but I have another picture on the uh upcoming slides, this house should look familiar, this came before you guys. A couple of years ago, I think.
Year and a half.
Year and a half, thank you, uh so this is basically expanding upon this existing improvements and creating a similar sort of uh trellis. And you know, a brick uh base with the columns there right behind the truck. That is uh essentially looking at this evening as far as it is freestanding and is in front of the front door. And here's a, I assume to scale model. I knew it would be, uh, scale model of uh the home, probably within the home as it sits today. So as far as our analysis goes, uh design is consistent with trellis, details on either side of the house as far as what's already been constructed. We certainly appreciate, again, as stated in the beginning of this meeting, we appreciate everyone that continues to invest in their homes. And this community and this proposal meets the intent of section thirty-nine of the zoning code, we have no received any public comments on this proposal. I don't wish to uh muddy the waters, however, I do appreciate that our uh city does not restrict. Uh freestanding structures in the front yard, sometimes that is something that is unusual, uh but in this situation, it's not. Encroaching within the front yard, it is within the existing. Part plane of the house, so uh we are certainly not opposed by any means. Uh, so again, this ongoing typo, please excuse me, the case is P Z twenty-five twenty. Located at eleven fifty-eight East Acacia Circle, subject to exhibits provided by the applicant and one stipulation of building permit issued by the city will be required. Before any construction is to occur, I'm available for any questions, this is Jeff.
I said one on the like little site plan, it says new garage, is that already? It says new garage? Is that not, I mean, that's not part of this thing?
To your, to your point, Chair, I apologize if this was not clear, I included this uh red highlight. Uh and it said extensive work specifically to address uh the overall site plan. Uh, since we had recently seen him a year and a half ago, I just brought out his old application. And we did a little uh line work there in the lobby to show what is being added on.
And we did that quick, cuz I wasn't quite sure what he needed, so.
Yeah.
That was done in his office.
I just didn't know, is that, is the garage already done, it was from from the garage, it says?
This side.
It's on the west, basically.
If you could stay on the mic, Jeff.
But it's already there, it's already existing.
Right here.
So uh goes in that way? Shared it.
Yeah.
Uh to. Better illustrate the point, um, there was a. Portion of the old proposal from a year and a half ago with it, would include a new garage.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's done, finished.
That, um. Uh Daniel said it wasn't permitted. But then I went back and John permitted it, but in the meantime. My wife said we don't have the money, so that got kinda mixed, so. I built the two pergolas on the, on the front to give the the house some dimension.
Yes.
And now the courtyard looks a little bare, so I'm just adding. Tying the whole thing together like you see. And it, and it doesn't look freestanding, cuz it, there's, those are.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it may be freestanding, but it doesn't look. Okay, I just wanna make sure we weren't approving a garage.
Couple of questions. Is it gonna have a brick foundation there, like you're showing, or is it just columns going down to a footing?
Right now, it's just the, the, the three, there's one existing column, there'll be three new ones, one in the back. And then two on the side and they, the um. The wainscoting of brick is not there uh now, but.
So so, when it's built, it's just gonna be a column coming to the ground?
It's gonna be column.
And and what material are you using?
Brick.
I mean, no, on the top, the actual frame.
The framing, um, the posts are gonna be six by six. The crossbeam is gonna be a six by ten.
Oh, so it's all real lumber?
It's all real lumber, well, the, the one's gonna be a glue lamp, but it's gonna, it's real, yeah, cuz I, I want that, I don't want any of this. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna bump it up, their glue lamp. In a six by ten, so. It'll be there, we're all gone.
Hopefully. Yeah. Hopefully, I, I've been in the business a long time. I, when I can get away from glue lamps on the exterior, the only thing worse than a glue lamp is a four by six or six by six where they. Were coming out and the top starts to rot. At ten or twelve years.
Yeah, so on the top of that, I'm gonna put a piece of um flashing. Before I put the um. Be four by eights, because I know that, you know, that, that part of your thing rocks after time.
Absolutely.
So um I talked to the lumberyard and uh I showed them the proposal. And that's what they recommended was the booming.
Sure.
So, and they said the materials on the glam today are better than they used to be, so. I'm not, I'm not in the business, I just go.
The only, the only thing I would throw at that is. The glue lamp is just laminated lumber.
Correct.
And it's all new growth lumber. The old beams, when they were making them, when first started making glue lamps, was old lumber, those that last forever.
Yeah.
So, but the, the new ones, just, you know, the salesman can tell you anything.
I know that, but I mean, who do you trust nowadays, you know, if I go to the lumberyard and they.
Well, when you point the finger, you yell at something, but with the other fingers, you trust yourself.
Thank you, but it's good.
Thank you.
Can I just make one comment?
Yeah.
I drive by your house all the time, cuz my parents live around the corner. And you've done a lot to improve the looks of that house.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I could show you a picture of what it used to look like and we're not, we're definitely not uglifying that house.
It had an identity crisis.
I just, I just wanted, yeah, I just wanna improve the neighborhood, cuz I love this place, so.
Thank you.
Ha- happy wife, happy life.
What's that?
I said happy wife, happy life.
Ooh, she quotes me on everything.
Do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept as proposed, second.
Give a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor? Of approving the the pergola as submitted, say aye? Any opposed? Okay, thank you, good luck. Okay, last but not least.
I'll talk to you in the morning. Alright.
And discussion and possible action to approve a new backyard pergola located at fifty-two oh five North Ginning Drive?
You know where that is?
I don't know where that is.
I didn't drive up there, I went, I saw everybody else, but I didn't get. The other side of fries. It's north of fries.
Oh.
Back in there.
So I was thinking it was the other way.
So, uh, Chair, members of board, good evening, uh. Item five G is a new backyard pergola, the applicant is uh Hans, let's just say, the owner's Kyle, ready, David? Okay, who, your name?
My name's Brian.
Brian is here on behalf of uh the applicant's team, I think there's, I think four people involved in this project at this point. Uh, the address is fifty-two oh five North Ginning or Ginning, uh depending on your belief of the word. Uh, this is within Sunset Terrace located behind fries, right actually at the knuckle, uh right behind the loading zones. The request is to build a freestanding pergola in the rear yard. The zoning is R one eight P D, uh this was originally the La Loma and then became Sunset Terrace as far as. That development, the request is a freestanding pergola in the rear yard with a solid roof. Here's a look of that backyard, and this is a gated community, so we do appreciate uh shots of the actual yard since uh it is access controlled to get here. You can see the partial view fence there, uh which faces east, if I recall correctly. Uh, here's a look at uh the proposal as far as. Fairly centered, uh what we'd see nowadays as far as uh what a lot of people seem to be doing. As far as how that look, you can see us, uh that nine-foot height, which uh does not exceed our allowances by any means. This is with uh north to the bottom. And uh the east to the left, so it is five feet from rear property line. Uh plenty of space from the pool, plenty of space from the house itself. So as far as our analysis goes, this does meet all the requirements, uh as far setbacks, separation distance, lot coverage, it does meet the intent of section thirty-nine zoning code. I failed to mention, but I apologize, uh I'll mention it now, the proposed color is consistent with the house itself. And we have not received any public comments on this um case for this evening. And again, uh I will fix this next time, ignore the typo. It's case P Z twenty-five twenty-one, located at fifty-two oh five North Ginning, subject to exhibits provided by the applicant. And the same stipulation of building permits issued uh by the city before any required, or before any construction is to occur. Happy to answer any question, as well as uh the applicant.
Is there an H O A here?
Uh, there very much is an H O A in Sunset Terrace, Chair, yes.
And are, are their C C N Rs are okay with the, with the structure, is it consistent with their C C Rs?
Do you know, I've heard?
Uh, from allows informed from the lead on this project, because we're the insulting for the pergola, that is something that is important to the C C Rs.
Yeah.
Chair, is, do we require a letter from the H O A?
Chair, thank you, we do not, uh it is, it's a. It's a unique situation because most of the time the H O A would tell you they need city approval first, we do not reciprocate. In that regard, because uh C C N R is between the owner and that association is a private agreement, nothing to do with the city itself. So it's not something that we, the city, require before they come before us.
Okay, and I would just point out that if, as we approve this, this evening, it doesn't mean that we're speaking for the H O A. And they could still say no, including on where it's placed, any colors, or whether it's allowed at all. So we can't speak for the H O A, I would make sure you get approval because they will make you take it out if it's not part of their C C Rs.
Absolutely.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm saying, it's the chicken and the egg kind of thing.
Yes, please. You need to repeat everything you just said.
Comment that sometimes the uh H O A approvals is dependent on this approval, so.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, I make a motion, we approve P Z twenty-five dash twenty-one for the uh addition of a pergola. Uh pursuant to stipulation number one, getting a birdie building permit from the city.
Okay.
I'll second.
You have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, good luck. Okay, and then. Staff report, current events.
Uh Chair, the only uh newer notable item was on the uh non-agenda item. Uh that the neighbor came before you this evening to present her uh email, I have copies of the emails. I'll give to you before you leave this evening, again, uh. This is not a discussion item, this is just information only, uh if there are any other questions on that situation, feel free to reach out to me. They are working through a co-compliance uh situation and we're. We're actively working with all parties to find a solution to a ultimate civil matter between owners. Besides that, uh Wishfield Square is open for business, if anyone's tuning in and would like to make a proposal, the R F P is available on our website. Uh La Loma Homestead is under review for the school, the primary center, the museum. The park and the library and will all be done by August of next year, and I will vacation in September of next year.
Are there, are there odds on that, or, or is that?
I, I don't vacation until it's done. It will be done.
Don't make any non-refundable travel plans.
Additionally, uh we look forward to seeing you in the May meeting, there will be a May meeting. More than likely, the school and performing arts center will be up for discussion and recommendation at our next meeting.
Okay.
I know for the business.
Any others?
Can I just ask, what was the address on the property with the email?
It's on this, um.
And I have machine there, and I have copies.
She's gonna hand it out, but this is this.
Yeah, and I have copies that have that information as well here.
Any um? Any um. This is um board member current events, anything to add? No, okay, I motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.